He's making money off of something. Because you want to be live streamed on social media, he's gonna profit from it, one way or another.
I'd like to make a motion to table this. It wasn't on our packet. I'd like to do a little research on this. Let's uh put it on the next, next meeting's schedule. In the meantime, I'd like to make a motion to just keep going forward with YouTube for now. And hopefully, within one month, we can get this up and running.
Before we move on with that, I, so you had mentioned that there's a, if we had a policy that Facebook comments are not considered public comment. Can you go over that again for me, so I can?
Yeah.
That was just something in a brief discussion via email that I had with the city attorney on his thoughts on it. I would need to explore that further of what that policy would actually look like. But he said, basically said, you wouldn't want to allow it without a policy. So I'm not sure about the specifics of how we would write that. I'd have to dig into that a little further.
So I guess that would be kind of the direction I would like to take is, is that if we have a policy that they're not considered public comments, and if we can get away with that and still allow the comments, I mean, I think I heard somewhere recently, words only heard if they're written on a brick, right? So, um, you know, I mean, you, there's gonna be stuff on there that's gonna be filthy and nasty, and that's just everything on social media, pretty much. So, I'm not a fan of, of social media for much of anything, but, but I do think it's useful in, in, you know, making sure that we're getting information out to people and, and that type of thing. So, so yeah, I would, I would say, you know, you made a motion to, to table it, but I mean, I guess I would, you know, if we, if we move forward with the AV equipment that we have, being on the Facebook Live, we do a phone or a tablet for YouTube, and then upload it, which is, I think, what you had mentioned you wanted to do, right? And then, you know, if we, if we look into the comments, I mean, we, I think we'll have time probably before our next meeting to, to get a response from, from there and...
Yeah, I do think so. Just to clarify though, we wouldn't use a tablet or iPad for YouTube. We will use the equipment that we have that downloads it.
Gotcha, okay.
So we would use, um, just the live stream would be on Facebook then.
Then you'll upload the live, yeah.
But I think, I definitely will, I would assume unless there's vacations in there, but I should be able to get an answer from the attorney on some direction further about it, and I will leave the current equipment as is, and we can choose to maybe use it or not, but, um, for the next meeting or wait.
I'll make that motion, Jimmy.
So we're gonna stay as is with our equipment, and then we're gonna look into a policy that Facebook comments are not considered public comments. And I've got a motion from Councilman Merrill.
A second.
And I have a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We've got, next order of business, accessing GIS database discussion.
So this is a request from Councilmember Merrill to have access. So the city staff does have an operational platform using our GIS that imports a lot of data that we use to create maps and to track different activities, whether it's water flushing, hydrant flushing, or repairs that we do to gate valves or anything else. And the request from Councilmember Merrill is to have access to that database. It was never set up with access to be open. There is the ability to have it where it's not editable, but to actually have a viewable, it allows for one, and that's a cost of about two hundred dollars per year. Hundred dollars for that user non-editable access. So that, that's an option, and council would have one username, so to say, to share between the, amongst you as, as a way to get in and use that platform or see that platform.
So, I had brought this up because the light discussion that we had last council meeting on County Road Five, I wanted to be able to go around and look on that software, because that has every light that's in the city mapped out. I wanted to be able to drive around and see the actual lights and say, hey, this light works good here. Maybe this would work good on County Road Five. But right now, if I see a light, I would have to call somebody to ask what it is, versus I could just go on my tablet and look at every single utility that's there. Or say if there's somebody that has a, a problem with anything city infrastructure, I can look at it first to see if I have an explanation before I waste city staff time. So it's a great resource. It's already there. The city staff all uses it. I think city council should be able to use it too, to be able to get more information that you can pass on to residents, or you can use to make decisions like the light project, which we had information about different lighting options that came through here. And I couldn't, I mean, I don't know what an eight-foot cheetah light is, but if I look on the actual GIS software, I can see what that is, and I can go look at that. So I know what it is, so I know if it'll work in that area type thing. So, for us to make decisions, I think it's a, it's a great service, and we already have it. I mean, for, what'd you say, a hundred dollars a year for all of us to potentially use it?
I believe it's a hundred dollars for the setup and two hundred dollars per year to give one user for everyone to share.
Okay.
For council.
I think it just makes us more educated on...
Definitely. I, I asked Josie almost the same exact question, but not in detail, so I'm a hundred percent for that.
As long as you're using it strictly for official city use.
Right.
Right.
Not for, you know, something's hunting plot.
And not sharing. Some things in there are confidential, so they're not to be released to the public.
Sure.
Right.
I guess I'm confused. So, so we've got, we have access to it now already, with our, our city staff has access to it?
Yep.
So why can't we just ask?
That was my question. Why can't I, why can't we have it?
Well, I mean, why?
You just ask.
Why can't we just ask city staff to see it?
Well, you could, but then every time, so I've had, there's probably been like six situations where I've wanted to look at it, so I've had to ask either Public Works or Josie about things. And I'd just rather not have to keep asking people. If I can just look at it, that was, that was my point anyways with it. Because say if I were to drive around and see eighteen different kinds of lights, and I said, I'm not gonna call Matt and ask what every single one is, that would be inefficient use of time, when I could just look at it.
It is, we could create a map, though. Those are, I guess I shared with both of you. It is creating a map. That is how we create our maps. By using that database that dumps out things like this.
There's a lot of different subjects. We talk about where I wish I had a map of what they're talking about that relates just to that subject, and we don't have them available to us. We just have the basic maps, pretty much what's on the city website. When I seen the light map the other day, I thought that was really a good map to look at. I could see the dead spots we need to fill it in. And I know she'll give us a map if there's a discussion about something, but it is nice to have.
It's inefficient.
Especially if it's related to any issues that, that we're looking at.
Or like even the city plow routes are on there, so maybe it's good to know which plow guy is, is on which route. I mean, it's, it's good to know there's all sorts of things on there. I mean, we're making millions of dollars of decisions here. We don't really have all the information unless we really go ask a lot, and that's gonna take city staff time, when we could just have it already here to look at, and, you know.
Three hundred bucks, is that what we're talking?
Well, no, it's just, it's just an example. There's all sorts of things on there. Like, if you, if you look at it, there's, it's like endless. You know, you can look at it and you can see, I don't know, the, it's just interesting, and it's, it's good to know that sort of thing when we're making decisions, I think.
Been on the council for over ten years now, and anything I've ever needed, I just ask staff.
Correct, but I think I'm pretty diligent, and I could annoy the staff, to be honest. So I don't really, I'm not trying to do that, because I, I mean, I have questions for Josie that I could ask literally every day. If I could look it up and not ask Josie, just questions all the time would be helpful. I guess I don't know why we would be against it.
So you're only gonna have one login? So the council's all gonna share a login, or how's that gonna work?
That would be my recommendation. That's the lowest cost option. Anything beyond that puts us into a next tier, and I'd have to get more information, excuse me, on how much that would cost to add more users, because I believe we will be into the next.
How would you track who's actually logging in then?
We would not be able to, but...
I wouldn't be interested.
I wouldn't be interested. I want my name on it. Somebody gets, got a piece of information, it's confidential, got leaked out, I don't want to be held accountable for that. Not a, not a chance. That's why it's confidential, confidential information should not be, if we need to know something, I have no problem calling you, or Matt, or whoever, to get that information that I need. Every one of those streetlights has a number on it. If you're concerned about it, look at the number on the streetlight. And you can say X, Y, Z, is there's the light. You can go around and drive around all night long if you want, and go write down all the numbers. And you can ask them what light that is. I've gone by streetlights that were burned out, made a call. And I said, hey, Josie, light number X, Y, Z is out. Okay. Take care of it. All I gotta do is walk up to the post. I don't want to be, I don't want to be tied to any of that information. Not, if it's confidential, I don't want my name touched to it at all.
What's confidential about it, Josie?
The, the distribution system of the water plant, and how, if, so if someone wanted to contaminate, they would know exactly how to do that. So those are not, those are not public information.
Sure.
You can always ask them to print you out a map.
Right.
And have them in your vehicle, or at home on your desk, or whatever.
So I could get all the maps printed out in physical form? I mean, as, as council members, we already deal with confidential information.
I'm with, look on this. I, I, I would like to learn more about the city, so I can understand it better.
The user access, I mean, there is the option of giving more. I would just have to find out what those costs would be. I don't currently have that in hand right now. The reason why it's separate access and why there's additional charges for that is because those ones would be not editable. So staff adds to this map, depending on what we're doing. If there's a repair done, we add to it. So this would be separate. This would be access to it, but not editable, and not creating maps that has the city logo, the engineer's logo in there, as you're not city staff employees. So that's why there, this is something different. I've never had to look into it, so this is why I don't have all the information tonight, but...
How many people have access to that system?
Only the people that need it. I would say the community development department, Public Works, myself, Mike Becker, I don't, Jamie, you don't, HR doesn't, just people who have to deal with any of those. What's that?
A dozen people?
I'd say less. Well, yeah, probably about a dozen.
Okay.
Because I don't think PD has access to that as well.
And so according to, uh, according to one council member, that we're the most trusted ones of the, of the dozen.
I'm not saying you would do it, but if that information gets leaked out, I don't want to be part of that.
Might not even be your doing.
It may not even be your doing. Maybe somebody got a hold of it.
I certainly, I understand that. I understand it.
Question, how many people have access to that program?
I'm not saying that I'm not trusting you. I just don't want my, if I do not have access to it, I can't be held accountable for it.
I think the difference is there, everyone who does have access, you can, you, you have a username, or the password to get in, and it's a little bit trackable. You can see who's doing stuff.
Well, if we decide to go forward, we don't have to give Lundin or call a set of passwords, I guess, yeah.
I guess I think it's essential to know that information as a city council member. I mean, we make so many decisions that are infrastructure-based, and if we don't know what's there, how can you make an informed, educated decision? You can't.
I agree.
So, I mean, I, I think if there's a way that we can get into it where it's trackable, I don't know what the cost would be, but maybe it would appease their mind. And that, I'm fine with that too, because I think it'd be good to be trackable. I don't know what that's really gonna do, but if it appeases their mind and makes them, maybe they'll like it. Like, I don't, Steve, have you maybe, have you not looked at it a lot, or do you, have you used it at all? Because it's, it's amazing. I, I looked at it with Matt for a while, and I was just amazed at everything that was there, and everything I saw, it's like, that would be so helpful in making decisions, because the infrastructure is what we decide on. So, I mean, if there's a way to slay...
And absolutely. The infrastructure, everything we make a decision up here is very important.
Correct.
But for me to have to go out and get into a program that I have no desire to be tied to, when I can get that same information that I need for each specific topic by calling Ms. Wood, or calling Matt, or whatever, I'm gonna call them. Because I'd rather have firsthand information than trying to go through something and decipher it. Plain and simple. You wanna, you wanna, I don't care. You can have the access to it. I do not want my name tied to it.
Okay.
Plain and simple.
Sure.
The, the problem I have is really with the cost. I mean, it's two hundred bucks a year, but, I mean, I, I've never had a necessary use for it personally. I mean, anytime we discuss things like streetlight info, we get a map that shows that, or, you know, or it's a, a phone call, and sometimes that phone call also helps clarify things, so it's, it's nice to get some context with, with what we're actually looking at too. So, you know, I think, to me, it's just, I don't think it's a totally necessary expense, and, and I wouldn't probably be in favor, I guess, of it. I mean, I can definitely look into it and learn more about it, but, but for, right now, at tonight's meeting, I wouldn't be in favor of it.
Okay. Josie, how many times do I ask you questions that could maybe be answered by me having that? I mean, it's, I ask you a lot of questions, correct? Probably more than any of us.
I would say that I do receive a lot of questions. I, I think that not all of them are tied to a map.
Sure.
I think it's kind of just general city operation stuff that we handle. I mean, the lighting one, yes, there's a map, but I believe that map was in your packet from the last meeting that we talked about it. So what you see, and we can print them big, but what you see, and you can zoom in on your PDF in your packet, is, is the same thing. It's just not editable.
I mean, could we get, could we as council members just get everything printed and have it in a book? Like, I know, back when I was on planning commission in maybe 2014, there was a, like a book that was handed out to me on all the planning commission stuff. Could we do that as council members, so we all have a map that's in physical form that we wouldn't have to pay for? Because, I mean, just to have that information is, is huge. I, I just, yeah. Jimmy, have you, have you looked at that, that at all? It's...
I haven't, no. I mean, it's, uh, no.
If you see it, I think you change your mind, because there's so much information in there. It's like, how do we make these decisions without seeing that stuff?
Because the staff shows us that.
But there's not everything in there. So we had, when we had the lighting infill on County Road Five, we had a map of County Road Five. That's all we got. Okay, there's a hundred other streets in this town where we could go look at the lights. This is just a, just a simple example, because we just talked about it. There's, there's gonna be many examples where I could say, hey, I could look into this GIS, and I could just find out this information. I could learn on it, and I can become educated on it, so I can make the right decision. So, I mean, if we can get it printed out, that'd be fine too, but I...
Is that an option?
It is an option. I mean, staff can print out any maps for council members. Just to clarify, if any city residents want maps, there's a, a copy charge. But yes, we can print those out. I think that it all depends on what you're looking to do. If you're looking to click into it, like I believe one of your other questions was looking at the AS-Built drawings. Okay, I can't, I'm not gonna print every AS-Built drawing, no. That would be a waste of, of resources and money for paper costs. But if you have a specific AS-Built, you are curious about a certain home and how that was impacted by the development. Yeah, okay, we can pull that up. Or I will just email you the PDF. Emailing you the PDF is the same thing as printing out a map, and then you can zoom in, zoom out. But yes, we can print them.
I guess I'd just like to have it, so I don't have to bother Josie all the time. But if we can get, I mean, like, a whole book of every map printed out, so we can use it to reference things before we make decisions, I think it's important.
Email all of them to you, and you can put them as files on any electronic device, instead of having them print them out. Because then you can zoom in, instead of using a magnifying glass, taking pictures with your phone of it, and blowing it up.
Sure.
Just have them emailed to you.
Yeah, I'm fine with that too. Is that a lot of time to have to email every single map that we have? Okay.
Okay.
I just, I just think it's important that all of us have this information, because we can't make educated decisions without knowing this stuff.
I've made educated decisions a lot, since I've been on council for over ten years. I've never had to use the GIS system to make those decisions.
Okay. I just, I guess I'm a little more thorough in what I want to do personally, so.
If I may, Mayor, I'd like to just add. I think that there's kind of the difference between operations and what the city does and policy. I think, you know, as council members, you're making policy decisions, and staff's doing operations, so that's what they bring forward, what, what operational things help to make decisions on the policies that you're changing, or creating, or amending, things like that. So I think that that's why, as Councilmember Lynn says, they haven't had to use it, because that's more the operational backside of things.
Okay, so do you need a resolution for anything on that, that, that's more just for discussion right now, right?
That was just for discussion, unless action was to be taken.
Okay.
I mean, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we're approved for the, using the software, but I don't know that it's gonna be supported, so I'll make the motion anyway. That we get access to the GIS software, so we can actually pull it up physically on our tablet. That's my motion.
My second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill, and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye. Um, motion fails three to two.
Can I still get that in printed form then? Or would I have to make a motion for that as well?
I can send it either printed or, or emailed.
Okay.
Cleaning services. You're just kind of searching.
Thank you.
All right, the last item of, of business here before the consent agenda is the resolution to approve extending agreement with Bill's Quality Cleaning for Cleaning Services. I just wanted to pull this out, because it was, to me, it just seemed like such a huge dollar amount, and I was just, wanted to know, I mean, are we doing weekly cleaning, or daily cleaning, or, you know, is it every other week? Or, I mean, I just, I mean, the, the place is spotless, so, I mean, maybe we could get away with a little less often, or, you know?
I think that attributes to great staff as well, but we do have cleaning services. It depends on the facility coming in. To City Hall, to PD, they come in once per week. Some places, they come in every other week. Some, they just come in quarterly, as they're doing more extensive cleaning, such as at the community center, stripping, waxing, things like that. The challenge that we've had with thi- this contract is, we've gone out for bids multiple times over the last ten years, and we don't always get great proposals back in. We have tried to deviate and go with a contract that was less cost to the city. However, we, it resulted in, and staff will really know this, look at the chief over there. It resulted in staff doing all the cleaning, because they no-showed constantly, and then we had to, they were in breach of the contract. So it's something that we've struggled with. We also did look into hiring more custodial staff part-time, in hopes that that would work. Again, it just didn't really bode well to getting people to, to show up, because it's just such a short amount of time that we need them there. And it has to be done not during working hours, so they come in evenings or weekends.
Okay.
So I had, I had a question on this one too. So are those quoted prices gonna be the same when PD has completely moved into their new building? Or does that account for that, or?
So there could possibly be changes that's still in the works. We will amend the contract if needed to accommodate for that. If we're able to do something different at the new PD, we might remove PD all in, in its entirety from this agreement. That is subject to change, and Bill's Quality Cleaning was aware that that was subject to change.
Okay, is there any reason that we make it a five-year contract versus a one-year or a two-year, or simplicity?
That is staff's recommendation. Typically, our contracts are between three and five years. Contracts take an incredible amount of staff time to put together, doing the RFP, which has to go to council first, going through, making sure everyone's a qualified bidder, going through background checks, and it's a pretty extensive process that we find that pushing it out, and we do have someone that's reliable and a great contracted service, such as Bill's Quality Cleaning, we find that it's in the best interest of the city to extend it.
Okay.
We haven't done anything farther out than five years as a contract term, but we've gone up to five years on different things. You may see it come up with refus soon as well.
And this is the same price we've been paying for, for the past years.
Yeah, yep.
So, if we're doing City Hall and the PD building every week, if we did it every other week, would we basically see the, the cost in half then? Or, or is there other obligations for the contract that it has to be a certain amount, or?
Uh, that, what they've bid is what we, we put in there as a, a request for them to quote on. If we were asking staff to clean every other week and not have a cleaning service every other week, it potentially would change. I, I wouldn't be able to say if it would be cut by half, per se, without consulting them, as what they would rebid or re-quote.
I mean, I'm assuming they're doing more of a deep clean than just, you know, a vacuum, or, you know, I mean, I, I think it's good, it's good to have them, but, I mean, if we do every other week and we can save four thousand bucks a year by doing that, I mean, I think, like I said, now the place is spotless, so, I mean, I can't imagine it would be incredibly disgusting if we waited another week and did it every other week, you know what I mean?
Well, we do, they do the, the vacuuming and the cleaning. They do scrubbing as well. I mean, obviously, if someone spills a bunch of popcorn somewhere, we're gonna, staff will pick that up. They do the garbage in the recycling containers. They're cleaning the bathrooms, the toilets. Staff doesn't do that unless, for whatever reason, they're not able to come. But, or if there's an issue that we need to, we will. But, yeah, they're doing, they're doing all the cleaning.
Yeah. This time of year, it's hard on the floors. Summer is gonna be worse, because it's tracking in sand and dirt and everything else. Get contractors come in with muddy boots, then the floor's filthy, and now we got somebody has to, somebody from staff has to stop doing what they're doing and go out and mop the floors, where they're taking care of it on a pretty regular basis. I'd say for keeping the place sanitary, it's a pretty miniscule price to pay.
Starting on page seventy in your, item of your packet, it outlines what they do, and the frequency that they do each facility at.
I mean, I would be curious to see if it's, if it goes down, if we cut a little bit.
They might redo their whole contract, and then might go double up.
It might, yeah.
And then you, you, here's a chance you take. You ask from the altar what they're doing, they might just double that price and do a half, half the job. Because now they're sticking, they're sticking through, they're sticking through what we've been paying them, they're just keeping it the same price. Here's a risk you take. Sometimes it ain't worth it.
Or who's gonna bid? The last time this contract went out for proposal bid quotes was, we got two, one being Bill's Quality Service, and the other company is the one that we had to say you're in breach, and we had to get rid of them, and then ask Bill to put a, to take on what he had initially bid his proposal at, which he did.
So we, we can't, since we have this contract written, we can't just ask, if we approve this company, we can't just ask him? If we were to lower our services, we can't? We have to put a whole new RFP and everything, or?
You could ask him, but you would have to, to be ethical, you would have to rebid it. If you are saying, we want the frequency to change, because all the stipulations, as I mentioned, starting on page seventy, that outlines what he gave his proposal on. It would not be fair if you changed that to him without opening it back up and giving other companies, theoretically, companies out there that may bid or may not, a chance to look at it. That, that's something in, yeah.
Even if we change the years, like down to two years, or one year, or three years?
That we're able to do, because that was in the proposal. No, I mean, if we change the year of the contract, yes, we have to look at this again, because he provided his proposal based on what was written in the RFP.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, but, how much, how much time does it take to do an RFP? And you just said it was a big pain?
So once we draft an RFP, it has to go to council for propos, for approval. That's by, is that statute, that one? It has, council has to approve the RFP before we can put it, then we put it out to bid, we put it in the paper, and we post it in different places as we're required to. And then we wait a certain amount of time. Staff goes through and vets them all out, because inevitably, not everyone will quote what you ask. So we have to vet that out, and then we look to see if they're reputable. We look at references. We call other cities. Which, I do think that it's worth to look into very well, but I will say this is a very, very tough contract to fill.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking to change the frequency of the cleaning, is all. I, I didn't, uh, and you're saying we can't do that without, without doing an RFP?
I guess I'm not gonna say you can't. I'd say best practice is that you open it back up. I can consult the attorney to see what our legal ramifications would be, if there are any.
Another cleaning company maybe didn't put in a bid, because we wanted it.
Do it every week.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Yeah, I guess I, I would like to see us, see if we could change the frequency that we're doing that. I mean, at four thousand a year is, is, adds up, you know, I mean, it's, uh...
And just for clarification, if this was to be lessened, I think this would be a good item, then, to go back to committee of the whole to get specifics, because I think if you're not having a cleaning service, providing the service, you're asking staff to do it, what things are you asking staff to clean and not have a cleaning service?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. You guys wanna, wanna move this to the committee of the whole here coming up?
I guess I'm not, I'm not sure where I sit on this one, to be honest. I'm kinda, I keep going, going back and forth. It'd be great to be just...
Months.
Nah, yeah, exactly.
It's gonna be months.
But I think it's also good to try and save money, but I don't know if it's worth it in this case. I, I keep going back and forth on it in my mind.
We're looking at mud in another month coming in and out of here, and if, if they skip a week, I don't know.
I personally, I might, I, I motion, I motion to accept the contract and move forward, but I, I understand where you're coming from. Save money, save money.
I think...
But who's gonna do it? If they don't?
I think if anything, just, we can at least drop it to every two years, and we go off for new bids, you know, or, or whatever, less than five. We can, we can decide that.
It, it would be kind of interesting if we could get a trial somehow with this guy, and, I don't know, it's not, maybe, no, no, no. I mean, maybe one, a trial as far as doing bi-weekly instead of weekly. Like, maybe we could just try and see if there's a noticeable difference. I think that's what Jimmy's getting at. If we can save money without a noticeable difference, it might be worth it, but I don't know if we can just...
See a noticeable difference in the entryway, in the hallway here, especially in the winter?
Sure.
People are tracking, salt tend to slop.
Mayor, council, to be honest, I'm not gonna, I will vacuum. If you want the city administrators to vacuum, I will vacuum. I'm not gonna let the salt build up on the rug. And that's fine, if that's what my job entails, if we want to wait every two weeks. But I don't think we should let the aesthetics of people, or, you know.
It doesn't, it doesn't take that long, it doesn't take that long to do, clean the entryway quick. I mean, it's, you know what I mean? It's, it's just part of, part of life. I mean, it, I don't think it's a huge deal to ask somebody to just take ten minutes to go out and, and not that it has to be the city administrator, but we've got all the Public Works guys. I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, if they do that kind of stuff.
They don't have time for janitorial services up at City Hall.
I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, you've got, you're paying a bunch of people anyway. I mean, yeah, we want the entryway to look clean and everything, but four thousand, I mean, I'm gonna be sitting in this spot for four years, right? So, four thousand a year, if we can save it, that's, you know, sixteen grand, so that's, that's a big chunk of money. And, and if it was my money in my pocket, which as a taxpayer it is, I mean, I, if, if we can get by with a little less... it is, I mean, I, if, if we can get by with a little less frequency, I think, I think it's worth looking into.
So, Michael, I have a question, Mike, I have a question for you. As far as the rest of City Hall, do you see much in the terms of dirt or grime that's really excessive, or do you think spreading it out would hurt anything? I mean, you're the financial guy, so I think you'd be the most objective on this.
If we go every other week, um, staff will definitely have to clean break room, front end bathrooms. There'll definitely be times where we'll have staff scrubbing toilets, that, for sure.
Okay.
No doubt about it.
I, I don't know, staff does a lot of hard work, they got a lot of, I, I, I mean, it's, it's a perk to everybody, not only the community, but to staff.
Kinda one of them things that's-
Necessary evil.
Yeah, it's a necessary evil, exactly. I, I get the sixteen grand in four years, that's, yeah, that's a chunk of change. I'd, I'd buy Matt one of his mowers.
Community center, someone, if you got back-to-back rentals and you don't have anybody to clean in between?
Right, and that's more, that's more per, that's a per-time cleaning there, so that's-
That's for stripping, waxing.
What'd you say? Oh, oh, you're right, yeah, yep.
I wouldn't wanna rent the place and have, be on the week that he's not there, and, and I gotta come in and prep it for my, whatever, graduation party or whatever.
Well, do they, do they actually clean the community center, or not? I don't see that on this.
Sometimes they do clean the community center, but, um, usually that's on a request basis. We do have a custodian that does, uh, clean over there. Roughly, his wage is about fifteen dollars an hour. But we were not able, when we tried to find a custodian type person to clean all the facilities, we were not able to get anyone.
So, that guy only wants to do the community center?
It was just a part-time, yep. Not to say that things do change, we didn't reach out to him, uh, you know, but-
I don't know, I just, uh, at, at my restaurant, if the toilet's dirty, who do you think cleans it? I do. So, it's not the-
Commercial buildings are a little different though.
Well, yeah. But, uh-
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think it's beneath anybody to, to have to help clean up a little bit, from, we're, we're paying everybody a boatload of money, and, and that's just, we have a cleaning service coming in. I'd like to see it, uh, with a little less frequency and have everybody pitch in a little, so, that's, that's my two cents, but-
I guess I would like to see it like a trial. I mean, I know it's a lot of work, but maybe we could do something, a motion where we could try it for one year and see if it's god awful. If it is, we go back. I don't know, it's, I know it's more work, but I think if you can save money doing it, that's kind of important. I don't know.
I've been here plenty of council nights where I'd use the bathroom in the beginning of the night and once at the end of the night. And you can tell, it's not clean anymore, just from four hours of being here. That bath, those bathrooms go for a whole week without being cleaned?
Well, and we're only here every other week, so, I mean-
Well, he's just referring to just four hours.
I'm just referring to in four hours' time how dirty they get. Time when you have an audience here, and you have people here, and, yeah, right, every other week, if you did it, you'd still catch that, you know, so. During the rest of the time, there's hardly anybody here using those bathrooms.
So, we're good till May first? We have a cleaning service till May first of this year?
Yep, the current contract expires the end of April. April thirty-first.
You wanna bring it back to-
Let's just, let's bring it back. We, let's table this for now.
I think we have to-
I'd like to look into a couple things too.
I think we'd have to give Josie some direction.
Can't table it, you gotta postpone it.
Postpone it.
Table means it's gotta come back yet tonight.
I think we should give Josie some direction, so she can have something to look into, because that's gonna come up really fast. Government moves slow, we only got a month and a half, so if we're not giving her direction right now, it's gonna be too late to do anything about it. So, I mean, I, I would like to see, I mean, maybe you just have a conversation with this, uh, the Bills, the cleaning guy, and see if it would be significantly cheaper, or if he would still be interested in doing the, the half as much cleaning, or, I mean, and then if he's just not at all interested, then, well, maybe we can say, no, we don't wanna do that, because we don't wanna lose him. But, at the same time, if he'd be interested and he just ballparks you a number, it'd be a good information for us to have to make a decision, if that makes sense. And then I know you'd have to write another RFP and all that, but that, that would, I guess I'd make a motion so Josie can look into cost differences with Bills potentially. I mean, I don't know if that's okay with you?
So, the, Bills was the second lowest bid, is what I read, right?
He was the second lowest, um, and the other one was the one that was the breach of contract. They were lower, but they could not perform the duties, they did not show up multiple times.
Okay.
And I do think, and I don't wanna speak for him, but he is local, he lives in town. I think that he's very, been very gracious to the city to give lower bids, and extending this out five years on top of his last three-year contract, and not increasing the cost, I think because he's local, but-
I guess I'd be curious to see the numbers. I mean, I, also, I, I know RFPs are sent out to people, but I think there's a lot more cleaning services in the area that might not even know that you're looking for someone to clean.
We did try pretty hard, I mean-
Did you, okay.
Oh, yeah, we were contacting Cleaning Services in Cambridge. Um, we did put the ad out, you know, I know that there are some people that are not with a business, like, brick and mortar business, but we did reach out to quite a few and only received the two.
Could, could we put something on the website? I like your custodian idea. Thirty dollars an hour, one hour a day, five days a week, should cover everything. Uh, that's seventy, eight hundred bucks a year, that's, that's your half that you're looking at.
They are here for more than an hour, though.
You gotta spend an hour on the bathroom.
It's two people who come, 'cause I used to, when I, back in the day, when I was here Friday evenings late, they'd come typically Friday nights and clean, and they're here more than an hour, and two people for Bill's cle- cleaning. So, I don't think one hour for one person's gonna, gonna do it.
I wish I could clean my house in an hour.
Well, they're here, that would be every day, so they could do, or, or they could, or five hours a week, and however they wanna use that five hours a week. Um, they could do it all on Monday, or break it up a couple on Monday and-
Hundred and fifty dollars a week, I think that you're gonna, well-
I think it's gonna be more money.
I think that's gonna add up there.
Well, that's my, my math, well, I gotta calculate it right here, thirty times five times fifty-two, yeah, come up with seventy, eight hundred dollars a year.
At a hundred and fifty bucks a week?
And then they, they, they'd have to, City would buy all the stripping and waxing and all that stuff, machines and-
And have to buy the machine for them to start them in the-
All the cleaning supplies and-
You can also hire that out, there's a lot of services that do it there, they're pretty easy.
Well, I mean-
For the, the floor waxing, 'cause that's expensive anyway.
Well, that's just, just a small part of what a cleaning service has when they come in here to clean.
Right. I'm just throwing out another option.